Welcome to the Silicon Valley Leadership Group Working Council. We're honored and delighted to have you here with us. And we admire and appreciate your willingness to run for seat representing the district for San Francisco. By way of referencing Silicon Valley Leadership Group Association of three hundred and fifty member companies, who collectively provide one every three five or seven jobs in the valley, which combined local revenues exceeding by a trillion dollars. Remember to remain innovative, start up your own business like my parents. We will keep our candidate interaction brief enough as much as possible for our members here. In the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, candidate John Leyva is an employee of member company PGE. I certainly want to indicate that we understand that this candidate is running on his own accord and is not an endorsed candidate of PGE, and his views and opinions do not necessarily refer to policy or positions of PGE. Our candidates are here, Anna Galena, Amanda Lee, Otto and John. Our format consists of three key parts, opening comments, questions and leadership and closing remarks. Opening comments, each candidate will have up to sixty seconds for opening remarks. Part two will consist of questions from our members regarding some of the policy issues on which the leadership are focused. You will take which candidate responds first and be there throughout our forum. Each candidate will have nineteen seconds to respond to the question. In this section, each candidate will be provided with one challenge card, which is yellow, white and blue. If you use your challenge card, it takes up forty-five seconds to respond. If you use the challenge card against a candidate, the candidate to challenge you will provide an additional thirty seconds to respond to the challenge. Use your card wisely. Part three will consist of a two-minute closing statement from each candidate. We have a lot of important people in the room today, our candidates, our member company representatives and our leadership group staff. However, the most important person in the room is our timer, Chris Alfredo. To help our candidates stay on time, our timer will let you know when you have thirty seconds left. When your time is up, and if you keep talking, our final as much time is right. Let's get started with part one, opening statements. Rotating order will start as follows, with up to sixty seconds per candidate to serve the panel.
Well, thank you. Good morning, and thank you so much for having us all here. It's always a pleasure to be able to talk to you and tell you a little bit about who we are. I'm Anna Nacarasco. I represent District Five of the City of San Jose, which is East San Jose. And I've been there for, I'm going on my sixth year, so it's been one of the greatest honors coming to be there. I'm ready for a talking with supervisors for a couple of very simple reasons. The issues that we're dealing with at the county are similar to the issues that I've been dealing with at the city level. I have the highest number of incidents in terms of domestic violence, sexual assault, especially for children under the age of eight. I have the greatest number of individuals who relocate after their release from jail or even prison in my district. I have the most number of hotspots, and we're still struggling with educational, quality education for our kids and high school graduation. We've been working diligently, trying to get the community engaged and involved in the democratic process. My time's up. We'll talk more. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Well, my, I'm standing up, you know, I have the little Italian blood. I like to move my entourage. But again, my name is Anthony Drew. Say it through. I'm actually a recent immigrant to the United States. I came to the United States as an engineering student, graduate student. After I got my master's degree in double E, I worked at IBM for eighteen years before I changed my career into politics. While they're actually in between, we worked, my wife and I were operating in a Chinese restaurant. I meet a lot of shakers and movers like Mayor Ron Fadale, and that got me into the politics. I served on the, thirty seconds already. I served on the County Metro House more for a year, ten, for there, also involved with the YMCA as a Metro Board Member, elected to Berrien's School District, served there for six years, and now have the honor to serve the San Jose City Council, representing the area, no, representative of the area, I'm sorry, the San Jose area, for eight years before I got elected to Assembly. So, thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is Otto Lee. I'm a veteran, I'm an immigrant, and I'm also a father. An IP attorney, practicing law here in the valley for twenty-one years, representing high tech, low tech and no tech. Having served eight years in San Jose Council, served as the Green Mayor, not just because of young, but also pushed a lot of our mental policies, including like toxic back bans, or making our B building more lean certified. Jay Paul has done well with my pushing him, making it both a link so for B goals. Twenty years in the Navy, I was recalled to active duty in Iraq ten years ago. President Obama says we're drawing down our troops, like twenty-eleven. I was in the middle of all that planning, the posting of two hundred bases. I'm safely bringing a hundred and fifty thousand troops home. I'm very honored to have the opportunity and so would the government. Coming back to commuting now, I want to help homeless families, love them, traffic jams, walkie. As experienced as morning, really need to help on and put on all the mobility, keeping our employees, finding people, so that's all right. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is John Leyva. Our community's greatest problems, homeless in the streets, mentally ill, the drug addicted, are fundamentally county responsibilities at Health and Human Services. I'm running because the county's budget has gone up sixty-five percent in five years, from four point nine billion to eight point one billion dollars, and yet all of our quality of life issues have gotten worse, including the homeless situation in that time. I grew up in Allen Rock. I went to Allen Rock Schools, K through A, Archbishop Mitty High School on scholarship, Dartmouth College on scholarship. And I've worked the last fifteen years in finance and project management. I did software internships for companies like PeopleSoft and Creative Labs right down the street. And I've worked at Agilent Technologies in corporate finance, doing treasury form and exchange, operation settlement. And then I got recruited to City Gas and Electric Company. I don't lead with PGE when I'm in Doorways for obvious reasons. But I've been there about thirteen years in finance, project management, project governance. I'm married, two kids, and I'm looking to serve our community. I've been on the planning commission and bond oversight committee, so I didn't fall off the turnip truck. I think I could do this. Thank you.
Okay, let's proceed to part two, policy questions from our member companies. Our first question comes from Ronnie Goff. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Thirty-two years ago, I was sitting in the seats. You'd be running for District Three on the board of supervisors. Usually I won, and served leadership on the board, so congratulations on your decision to run for what I consider the most invisible level of government in the region. My question has to do with transportation, and I'll read it just the way it was written by the staff of the SBLG. The SBLG, along with SPUR and the Bay Area Council, has been exploring a potential large-scale transformative transportation measure for the nine county Bay Area, along the scale of Los Angeles's successful measure M of two thousand sixteen, which is raising a hundred and twenty-three billion dollars for transportation projects. Would you support a one-cent sales tax dedicated to build and operate a world-class seamless integrated transit system to better serve Bay Area residents who are transit dependent and that are status compelling enough to take car commuters out of their automobiles? Please answer with yes or no, as well as a why. We're gonna start with Kenson and the guy.
I've decided to accept the board answer. You know, I haven't really decided on that yet. We're having a lot of discussion in Sacramento. Different agency has approached me and, you know, we're also going to put the education, statewide education bound on the ballot for November. And also, we were thinking about CASA, the housing, housing, how it would be a nine county bound. So, there's a lot of competing measures on the ballot, and I probably would choose either the transportation or the housing. And at this point, I haven't really made up my idea.
Thank you. No, I do support it. For the LA County, it has provided a plan that's included major light rail expansions, creating new life and pedestrian pathways, major freeway, and also road maintenance plans, and so much more. And I do believe that Silicon Valley is really in need of a major update and upgrade from transit lines. As VTA is extending the light rail to Evergreen, we are seeing cutbacks in many services. Public transit has been a piece-by-piece piecemeal approach, and that doesn't work. It's time for a major announcement, a real creation of a plan to make the hub of innovation technology the home of our transit solutions. As your supervisor, I'll guide visionary ideas to become real solutions that we can take to improve our transportation. I also want to see to make this investment now. For resident of LA County, measure M will increase to one percent in two thousand thirty-nine, and this will provide further funding of stability, which was really needed. And the changes that people are paying now will not actually realize for another decade. I don't believe we can really wait. We really need to take action now. And that's the reason why I'm very big on supporting public transportation, because until people get around, this traffic they were experiencing is not going to go away. Thank you.
All right.
Yes. I attended, I was very fortunate when I was at college, to attend language study abroad in two different places. In Puebla, Mexico, where I got my Spanish up to fluent, and Berlin, Germany, where I got my German to passable. And both of those cities provide an interesting study in how to do transit compared to how we do it here. In Puebla, we had what were called Conde's. They were tiny Volkswagen buses, and there were predefined routes that the city or municipal government had established. And they went all over town, and people used them all over the place. There's a parallel there that maybe we could do something innovative like that, you know, for VTA or for other systems. But Berlin is the really informative case, because Berlin has a network of an underground subway, they have an S-bahn that looks kind of like Trang, and they have buses that go everywhere, and then the tram system in the whole East Germany. You get one pass, and it's by zones, and it gets you anywhere in the system. But the most important thing about both of these is that they go everywhere. Our system doesn't work, because it doesn't go everywhere. We need transit to go to where people work and so they can do their daily lives. We need to make sure that people can get to jobs in other communities than with status or Campbell, and not just be on transit corridors and segregated into transit ghettos. So, I would support a sales tax measure if we can get a fully integrated system that really provides access for the entire valley and Bay Area on par with a world city that we deserve to be.
Thank you for the question. The highly housing crisis that we're experiencing in the valley is very integrated with the traffic that we're seeing. And I bring that up, because I think that we're at a point where we need to do everything and anything, not just to house folks, but also to get them on a cars and get out of that parking lot that you consider that's supposed to be a freeway or an expressway. I represent one of the most challenged districts in the City of San Jose and in the county as well. These are the folks that fuel the underground economy, that support Silicon Valley. These are also the folks that can afford to either buy a car or have that second car after the main breadwinner goes to work. So, it is a community that is completely dependent on public transportation. And we need to do whatever's necessary to get folks to where they work, to where they play, to where they study, and make sure that it's integrated and that it is seamless. I sit on the VTA Board, and some of the hardest decisions that have been made have been around bus service, and whether we cut lines or not, or whether we exclaim them. But we need to make sure that those folks that really are dependent on public transportation are part of this conversation and get an opportunity to be able to benefit from this. I forgot to say yes or no. Yes, I support the tax limit. And I don't think it's an either or when it comes to housing or transportation. I think they both, support both measures.
Thank you. And I got the second question. The November twenty-twenty ballot will have a measure to amend Proposition Thirteen. The amendment would impose a split bowl property tax on commercial industrial properties in California on the assessment for market value. There would be several negative consequences for the California economy. Taxes would become unpredictable for employers that operate in commercial and industrial properties. Compliance expenses would decrease, taxes would decrease, see if you can implement businesses. Do you support or oppose this ballot measure? We're gonna start with Otto and then go to John.
Yes, this proposal, as split role talks only about the commercial building, not the residential building. The purpose of Prop Thirteen is making sure that the folks can keep the housing, that they live, when housing prices come too high, that they will not be evicted with an increase of property tax. So, to me, I really do believe this housing, this house, could be a community for a proposition as long as it can. I've been the fiscally prudent record with the mayor and councilman, announced budgets in Sunnydale, and labor pains, and now various departments, essential funding available for commercial properties in former good valleys truly will help our communities and schools, and especially the areas that's vulnerable. It's going to be a huge change because of the assessment issue. And this, this manager, one of my supporters, my support, is an announcer, is this Larry Stone. As much as he's supporting me, he's not agreeing with me on this specific issue, because of that deep belief that this would be very hard to assess. I look at it more holistic way, supervisor, obviously you can find a solution to provide financial stability to all our residents and businesses. Sometimes these tough decisions will make the biggest difference. And I'll also meet full spectrum of community partners to work to make decisions to do the most good for our community, no matter how difficult this is. We have to rise above the status quo and put the needs of people first. Thank you.
Hi there. I've been putting schools and communities first for almost twenty years now. I started my community engagement as an education activist. I met my wife trying to recall a guy from the Allen Rock School Board. She teaches second grade in Allen Rock. I'm pretty sure putting schools first is at the top of mind for me. That said, split role is the wrong way to reform Prop Thirteen, and it'll drive unintended consequences. It'll be really, really hard to correct. First, despite small business exemptions, many small businesses are on triple net lease arrangements. So, it could be a nail salon or something like that. They'll be put out of business, because the property tax increases will come through, and it'll just nail them. We will see a recession in this state if we do split role. Secondly, split role further fiscalizes land use. One issue we have in this town is a lot of cities go hog wild on commercial, and they don't build residential, because they don't want the cost, they don't want the service provision for that, they want the tax revenue. Guess what? It's gonna be ten times as bad if we do split role, right? We'll have every further reason to do that. Third, Otto touched on it, everyone facing an increased assessment has an automatic incentive to appeal, which is gonna drive all sorts of bureaucracy and red tape in the assessor's office. Then the last thing, and I think this is a really important point that gets missed. Our state and our local revenues are highly driven by the market itself. Capital gains tax receipts, income tax receipts, and so forth. If assessments are going up and down, we're gonna get even further oscillations in boom and bust cycle in our local government funding. It's completely idiotic to do split role. Thank you.
I've served on the Eastide Nina High School District before I was elected to the city council. Eastide Nina High School District represents the largest high school district in Northern California, almost twenty-three thousand kiddos that were graduating or failing in those, and we're either preparing them to have, you know, sliver of the pie, or in most cases are not prepared enough to be part of the Silicon Valley economy. And I'll just say, I support the reform for very simple reasons. One is, I think it is inherently unfair that some corporations are still paying nineteen seventy-eight property evaluation taxes. And at the end of the day, the only ones that really have been shortchanged have been our kiddos, especially in my local province. And so I know that this is gonna be difficult. You know, you mentioned that it's an unpredictable tax bill. You know, I sympathize with that kind of dilemma. My taxes are unpredictable every year, and we manage to get through it as a family. But this would be a game changer in the city of California, especially for children who have really been back behind.
Thank you. I do support it. You know, I had a lot of discussion in the assembly. There's so many different proposals trying to close the loophole of Proposition Thirteen. I don't know if it's really a loophole. But it was addressing this split, the split role versus the split rate. I know a lot of assessors, they like the split rate, because it's easier for them to implement. Split role, then they have to go out and reassess every property. It might take a little bit longer. And, but in general, generally speaking, the state doesn't take a penny off of the property tax. All your property taxes stay local, stay in your schools, stay in your county and city services. And so, and like councilmember pointed out, there's a lot of companies in California, the older company or being around for a long time, are still paying nineteen seventy-seven tax. And I think with this community and school first, probably level the playing ground for the new company, will be able to end up paying the old, the long company being here for a long time, be kind of paying the same rate as the newer company. But how we gonna divvy up the money is really a challenge.
Can I play my challenge card? Do I have to like slap it down? Okay, I wanna play my challenge card. So, we heard two statements a couple minutes ago here that I want to challenge. One, the idea that urban schools are suffering. We got W twos in the Leyva household just last week from my wife. She's a second grade teacher. She's on her fourth year teaching. And in the last calendar year, which mine do spans across two academic years, seventy thousand dollars. We know that's not enough, but she teaches twenty-seven kids, and those kids come with eleven thousand dollars of school funding. So, how is it that a teacher makes seventy thousand dollars, but her classroom is funded to the tune of two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in the state of California? That's the first problem. So, where's all the money going, former trustee? Secondly, all property taxes stay local. That's not true. We know that districts receive money from the local control funding point, while they're allocated based on student average daily attendance or ADA. Some districts are on basic aid, like Los Altos and Palo Alto Unified, and it's true that those property taxes stay local. But most of the rest of the state, over three-quarters of the districts, receive money on a per-student basis. So, I'm all for refunding for the schools, but we have to figure out the right simple mechanism to do it. A far simpler reform for Prop Thirteen would be to raise the annual assessment increase from two percent to three percent, or some number that kind of tracks with inflation and doesn't lock it down forever and ever. But it's certainly not the case that urban schools don't have enough money, and property taxes all stay local. It's just not true.
So, current assembly expert, very honored to be in the position. I just wanted to respectfully challenge my friend John Leyva on this tax distribution. Yes, after the stay path to Proposition Thirteen, then in eighteen eighty-three, the people also took the path of Proposition Ninety-Eight, which is for the city to guarantee the minimum funding for school. And that's why, as we're thinking right now, on a good budget year, twenty nineteen, we have surpluses, but almost fifty percent of our general fund revenue, which is mostly generated by your income tax, are going into education because of Proposition Ninety-Eight. Let it go?
Yeah.
Let it go.
Let it go. Let it go.
That's why the state, because of Proposition Ninety-Eight, the state is supplementing the education locally.
Our third question comes from John Con.
Hi, thank you so much for being here this morning. My name is John Conner. I work for healthcare. One of the county's primary roles is as a healthcare provider, nearly half of the county budget going towards healthcare. How do you envision maintaining those services in the years ahead amidst all the political, regulatory and economic uncertainty facing the healthcare industry? How did the addition of two hospitals to the county's health system factor into this equation?
Okay, I think I'm first, right? Okay. So, my understanding is that the health system for the county is actually a little over half of the budget, roughly five billion out of the eight billion for the county. So, there's a couple things. One, adding the two hospitals actually expands access, and that's a really good thing, right? If we'd have closed St. Louis and the health system in South County, people would have to drive even further. There would be lives lost for that. So, it was absolutely essential to purchase them. When I was a neighborhood guy, and I happened to be living by Buffalo Medical, we had a community roundtable where we went round and round with them on the crisis response for like homeless people that were on the street. What we came to find out years later was that they weren't able to staff the line level people. They hired two out of the six roles, the boxes that were available, and they hired a manager. I think the county needs to do a top-down performance review and really look at the spans and layers of the organization. I believe we're too top-heavy in the management side. And in the case of that crisis, we're trying to get started. Those, the two people they hired out of six should have been directed into another manager while they scaled up the team. So, I've seen a lot of little examples on the edges of waste and just poor management in the county. Secondly, a friend went to O'Connor right before the merger. O'Connor took so long to build her insurance that O'Connor ended up eating, eating the cost of her hospital stay that was like three days. So, we know there are internal issues that are preventing our billing. So, the county needs to really focus on cost recovery from insurance and doing proper billing practices and a top-down performance review of HR.
I've often said if, when we go out and we meet with our voters regarding this position in particular, it's surprising, and I'm sure you're gonna be shocked by the fact that most people don't know what a county board supervisor is, what they do or what they're responsible for. My response to them is, that means that you've been very lucky. If you don't know what the county does, or a county board supervisor does, I think Mayor Ron Fadale has labeled it the invisible position. It's because no one in your family has needed it, and hopefully he won't need the services either. It's the absolute last safety net, the last stop for many folks, and it's the difference between life and death. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about the county. The county services are an issue of life and death for many folks, or it's an opportunity to rectify a wrong that they did and get a second chance. In terms of healthcare, it's our responsibility to make sure that our communities are safe and that they're healthy. If they're healthy, those of you who don't use the county will be healthier as well, because we interact, we're not in isolated cells. We all interact with each other. I'll tell you, right now, there is currently over eight hundred vacancies that have been filled, and this is for the entire county, in every department. We need to make sure, one, that we fill them, so that we can provide the services that we need, including healthcare services. But there is a huge cost savings that has been taking place over many years, because those vacancies have never been filled.
To county, I've acquired the two hospitals, O'Connor and Luthen. And I felt the county is expanding its services a little bit too fast. But it's a good thing that they got those two hospitals, and I know like the merge, the two company merge, there's a lot of wrinkles we need to iron out. So, I would definitely, depending on, we're relying on some auditing report to further give the direction to the county exact, of how we're moving forward. You know, I'm running for the county supervisor. I'm now looking for county exact job. So, I would like, as an engineer, our training, I like to look at the real data. One thing I like to see the improvement in overall county services is on the mental health. And I, as a nationwide recognized leader on school-based mental health, we want to get the mental health in schools so we can help the kids, and they're young. And also, I would like to look into some improvement in the dental health. Many other counties have a dental health director, and Senator and county don't have a dental health director. So, I'd like to make some improvement in those three areas.
So, the role of a county, as somebody said, is called the madi and the nee. And there's a lot of truth in that statement, in the sense that when it comes to healthcare... And there's a lot of truth in that statement in the sense that when it comes to healthcare, we have a lot of the data non-presidential saying about how universal healthcare. Guess what? A county, they provide healthcare to everybody. Whether you adopt them or not, whether you insure them or not, and whether you pay them. And this is the role of our county system. This layers in deeper services, so we have O'Connor and Saint Louis, it's absolutely necessary because if we had money set in on veterans and workers, those hospital people. Remember what happened with your? Those didn't go straight to Saint Louis. Currently, only a few percent of our patients are privately medically insured. The rest are Medicare, Medicaid, which have a very low reimbursement rate. And of course, there are those who actually do not get any money involved to our system. Many don't know that we have our best burn center, new medical care, and the highest level trauma care center at this hospital. DMC is actually our gem. What we need to do more is our marketing. We need to tell people how good we really are. Folks a lot of times think that they would go to the other hospital, think the service will be better because all of that is county hospitals. They are not as good. And I think that's the image that needs to be improved. I've talked to Paul Lawrence, the CEO, and he's working very hard to introduce to my people how important our resources and have more people to bring their trust into our business. Thank you.
Yeah, a quick question comes from our working council chair.
Good morning. The South Bay Labor Council is pursuing a ballot measure to be placed on the November twenty twenty ballot that would prohibit campaign contributions from some residential and commercial developers, landlords, lobbyists, and some other advocates for development in the city of San Jose. The measure would also move San Jose mayoral elections from California gubernatorial election years, example twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six, to presidential election years, example twenty twenty four and twenty twenty eight. The proponents of this measure argue that this measure will keep special interest out of San Jose elections and increase voter turnout from San Jose mayor. Opponents of the measure point out that a proposed measure does not prohibit campaign contributions from organized labor and other groups tied to labor who contribute millions of dollars to candidates at independent expenditure campaigns every election cycle. Opponents also believe that the presidential campaign will capture attention of voters and negative impact in mayoral elections in San Jose. Are you in favor or in opposition of this measure? If you are in favor, please touch on how this initiative will prevent some in the community from making campaign contributions while allowing others to continue making contributions. Don't have cancer, start first.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm in favor of that. You know, we, I, I'm in favor of all, any limit of the, the, uh, campaign contribution. Actually, in the state assembly, I have a bill to expand the assembly from two years to four years. And as I'm leaving the assembly, I'll make sure it's not really self-serving. The reason, I think, that every two years, um, a lot of members are constantly, um, raising money for myself. I, every year, you know, I have to raise about three hundred thousand dollars. So, any measure to limit the contribution to the campaign, I, I support it. Currently, we will have, we're moving on forward a bill to, uh, to prohibit the public utility company like PG&E to, uh, to contribute to, uh, to our, uh, state legislature. Because there, there, there's a, um, state legislature, they received the money and then they, I was, it was on the local television and he ended up donating the money to a nonprofit. And but he felt that was not enough, so he ended up, uh, offering the bill, uh, Assembly Tai, who's a Republican, and as well as our governor, you know, taking a lot of money. So, any, any measure to limit the political contribution, I support.
Can I respond to the PG&E part for me?
Sure. Well, first of all, I believe moving these, I'm seeing mayoral elections to coincide with the presidential election cycle, presidential cycle would be a positive because more people will be coming up to vote. And that's engage more voters locally. And I do believe that more people vote, it does enhance our democracy. When we see the national conversation about expansion of our voting rights and access, and especially something that we hear about, this is a chance for us to do something locally to make sure our community are participating in our election. As for the second part of the measure, I certainly don't believe that the change might be on one side of the resistance. And as my, a DMC member of San Antonio, clean campaigns and transparency are absolutely important to our voters. Locally and rival, when you're raised for the Senate, has really championed clean campaign because of our experience at their PPC and at their PC level. This issue is resonating with the people. The portion might be stricken down because of the fact that might face legal challenge. But I do believe that even if this stuff is tied to the report, the mayoral switch issue will still be enacted. Thank you.
So, so first, just for the record, and it kind of got said earlier, I've not received any campaign contributions from PG&E. They do not contribute at the local level. Secondly, I'm literally on vacation time right now, and it's not because he's on the job. I oppose the fair elections, so-called fair elections initiative because it's not fair. First, if we want to limit campaign contributions, then limits not just dollars, but staff time and volunteer time, independent expenditures, et cetera, should apply to all organizations, not entities of one side of the aisle, but not the other. Second, the current practice of having the man race on the off-year cycle serves as an additional inducement for voters and helps to level voter turnout from cycle to cycle, presidential versus gubernatorial. If we shift man race to the presidential cycle, we'll have even lower turnout in the odd council districts like District Five, District Seven, et cetera. And that's, that's not right. Um, third, this is basically a transparent ploy by labor interests to boost turnout in mayoral elections and advantage their candidates as an anti-democratic form of gerrymandering by talent. This measure does nothing to make San Jose or our political environment better. It is wrong and should be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think, uh, I don't know what the argument is against, um, increasing voter turnout. And, uh, I'm open to the idea of reconsidering. I've supported this in a reverse. Because I think it's important to have as many folks, especially women and communities of color, poor people come out to vote. We've seen empirical data. And when you realign these elections with the presidential, um, cycle, uh, we see a greater turnout. Case in point, in Los Angeles, uh, LACD or City Council District or Tino, has typically seen between fifteen and twenty thousand voters turn out during the election. Now that they've aligned it with the presidential election, I'm expecting seventy thousand individuals to come out to vote. Uh, I don't, uh, I, I can't seem to make an argument that fits in my, um, in my, uh, radar to understand why we want to lock people out of the democratic process. Especially in the city of San Jose, we want to make sure that communities like the one that I represent come out to vote and that they vote for that individual that's going to run their city. Uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of the contributions, there was a poll that was done and by far, uh, individuals want to see clean campaigns. They want it to be transparent and they want, uh, uh, folks to be upfront about those contributions. This, this measure itself would only limit developers who currently have a project in the pipeline.
Okay, our fifth and final question comes from Craig Robinson.
Hi, the Silicon Valley and all of California is deepening housing affordability crisis. Our region has failed to build enough homes for all income levels to keep pace with population and economic growth. This has led to longer and far-reaching commutes, a loss of workforce talent as workers leave the region, and more and more people experiencing homelessness living on the streets and in cars. One of the main factors in spurring housing production is available, developable land. The county owns public land that may provide the opportunity for building housing. Would you support using county land for housing and affordable housing, including the former San Jose City Hall and the county fairgrounds? Why or why not?
We're kind of, we're kind of jumping around. Okay, I'll take it. I'll take it. Okay, uh, and this is cooperation expressed. Uh, I think that this is one of those issues that most of us agree on that, uh, in, in, you know, in the span of, uh, seven, eight years, Silicon Valley did a magnificent job in creating over seven hundred thousand jobs. That's wonderful for those who are working, who are able to keep a roof over their children's head, uh, and who are able to, uh, to really envision their lives differently and make it a reality. Uh, but, but, uh, at the same time, Silicon Valley only built a little bit over a hundred thousand units, which means that we have, uh, almost two hundred thousand individuals who are mega commuters who are traveling from Fresno and Tracy, Turlock, Los Baños, and, uh, over two hundred thousand who are coming in from the East Bay. Again, that freeway, that express lane, uh, that is supposed to get us to work or to, uh, to a true school becomes a parking lot because housing crisis, uh, and, uh, and the transportation and traffic are intricately connected. So, uh, we've done, uh, much in the city of San Jose to, uh, increase the opportunities to build more, build quicker, streamlining permits, um, thinking out of the box in terms of creating, uh, more opportunities so that we can build faster, preserve and protect as well the three P's uh, that is mentioned many times when we talk about the housing crisis. But we need to make sure that our social workers, our nurses, our teachers, our baristas, our gardeners, our cooks, our nannies, uh, our neighbors stay in the city that they learn to love, whether it's Cupertino, Palo Alto, or San Jose. And so I'm, I'm absolutely in, uh, support of building on county lands because we, we have control over that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the question. We, uh, the state legislature are moving forward, they ought to require every level of government have an inventory of their buildable land. You know, uh, I, I think to address the, uh, the homelessness housing issue, we need a real cooperative plan, uh, to bring all the regional leaders, developers, laborers, the financial people, all together to come up with a long-term plan. Throw, uh, just throwing money at, at a, at a pub, uh, is not solving the problem. You know, we, we, I could, right now, we still, county is still sitting on probably what, six hundred million dollars on, on the measure eight fund. And, and they're, they're not, uh, uh, they're still looking for land, trying, trying to build. So land, have an inventory of land or improvements on land trust is definitely a good idea. Uh, when I was on the San Jose City Council, I have a North San Jose neighborhood plan, which calls for twenty eight, no, twenty four, thirty-two thousand unit of housing, plus twenty-eight million square feet of additional industrial commercial building. At that time, we were worried about, and this is during the big recession, you know, you see the foreclosure of the city. We're worried about all the thirty-two thousand unit permit gap, you know, uh, uh, all taken before we see any, uh, commercial and industrial building. So I divided it into four phases, and each phase will only allow eight thousand unit housing to be built. San Jose is different than other cities. San Jose is different than Palo Alto and San Diego. We have the duck, ducking on nighttime and daytime population imbalance we need also need to address.
So questions, whether we support building housing, affordable housing in county land like the San Jose City Hall or the county fairgrounds? Uh, first of all, absolutely yes, I do support it. Uh, I was an immigrant from Hong Kong, and in Hong Kong, when we talk about high-density housing, we don't talk about six stories. I grew up in a building that's over twenty stories high, and I think it's something that's longed for you for this region of San Jose. Uh, I do not support building county land, like in rural area of the county, that is not smart room. What we need is high density in where the transportation portal and downtown is. And I think the city of San Jose has been pushing a lot of these great initiatives. Uh, we talk about the city hall of San Jose, the whole city hall, I think is a, is a great idea. Uh, there is actually land right now in, 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 in discussion of the county's own civic center area to use some of those items for affordable housing. Because it's right next to transit, right next to light rail. And I do believe that this area, that the density needs to go up. I know people have been talking about maybe even six stories of being high. But like I said, I really think that we need to tap on density. Look at the world-class cities. San Jose is becoming world-class cities. We look at the skyline of New York City, of Chicago, or even the LA downtown. San Jose is nowhere near, and that's why you want to fit all people to work and live and play together off the density of the country to tap on people.
I grew up here, I know I'm the spring chicken of the crowd here, but I am actually forty years old. So, this area has been an expensive place to live since the seventies, I think. Those of you who've lived here most of your lives understand that. And those of you who are recent arrivals, definitely understand it now. I have many friends, family who are mega commuters. So yes, I think the county, which owns more land than anyone in the county, ought to be using all developable sites, uh, to spur development, either as contribution or some sort of in-kind contribution. I'm concerned about the location. I want the county to use sites that are close to jobs, employment and service centers, close to Valley Medical, close to job centers in the West Valley. I want to see the county squeeze those types of contributions into the existing budget. You know, the budget wound up fifteen percent year over year, and it's still on the rise, okay? And I'm concerned about Measure A as an example, of twenty-two projects in the pipeline, fifteen of them, or, or over fifteen of them are in San Jose. So the first project opening Cupertino had nineteen units. Why is it that Cupertino only gets nineteen units, but East San Jose gets thousands of units to generate, you know, trips, travel, um, vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gases, all those things that we've worked to be against? And we're putting all the housing over there and all the jobs over there. And we need to change that equation, build a smart and balanced, uh, economy here. And the, the county could be an integral part of that. Thanks.
Okay. Otto first to start with the on this one, just to transition around three quarters of comments. On the interest of time, each group gets sixty seconds of mine. So Otto will go first and then we'll go John here.
Okay, good. Well, first of all, thank you for Silicon Valley Bishop Group for hosting this conference. Uh, this is where I think the good ideas could be personally. Only one of us would be elected, our council supervisors. One thing I'm proud to say is that I think all of us have been very good public servants in many ways in our community. And then these ideas, we try to borrow each other's ideas, fifteen grand to gain good ideas together. So whoever gets elected, they will implement these things more and more regularly. Uh, right now, our stock market is at all-time high. Uh, it's very exciting to see the, the employment slow. But what's below the surface is that we're living a very split community. The half and the half not, it's very, very dire expressions. And if I can look at the homeless situation, look at the housing affordability, a lot of our workers have to commute very far to work here. This is not sustainable. And you know, it's just like the big earthquake, the economy is not going to keep going up that way. It's not inevitable, it's a mental illness. The county will be, I'll be stating, we're not ready at that time. So thank you so much for being attentive, this is really important in the future.
So we all know that the county is the social safety net, but I see it as a platform for human capital development and long, long-term success for all members of our community. I'm a very lucky person. I spent the first five years of my life from five months to five years old as a foster kid. I was with the same family the entire time, they were able to adopt me. So, by all accounts, I shouldn't be here. The outcomes for foster kids, on, on average, are terrible, but I was lucky. I want the county to change direction so others' fortunes can improve as well. I get development, I worked in banking, I've worked in construction, construction management. I don't understand why the city of San Jose charges six hundred dollars in permits to replace a distribution power pole. I've seen the effects of red tape on organizational efficiency or inefficiency. I want to take that understanding, that root cause analysis, that financial analysis, that HR analysis, and, and bring it to the county. I've been a planning commissioner, a neighborhood leader. I've served my community both in my day job as well as nights and evenings and weekends, and I'm looking to do that here as well. and I'm looking to do that here as well. So, I thank you all for listening to this.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for having us here and giving us an opportunity. Also, to get to know each other a little bit more. This is the only time that we really get to interface. But before my time on the city council, I was a social worker. I worked with families in crisis. I worked eleven years at the county, working with foster care and adoptive homes. And then I went on to work at First Five doing really exciting pilot programs. One with a court that dealt with domestic violence and making sure that the children weren't left behind during their battles. And then the second was at Gardner Community Clinic, doing a very innovative program that worked with, alongside with doctors. Doctors are wonderful and they're great providers. They don't always pick up on behavioral issues or emotional needs of children, and that's what we're there for, making sure that an entire system was wrapping their arms around families who were dealing with behavioral issues. At the end of the day, the county, again, is dealing with life and death situations. And, and, and I, I hope that we've been able to make our statements clear. There are many issues that we all agree on, housing, addressing the homeless population, making sure children get an opportunity here in Silicon Valley, and making sure that the revenues, the wealth that's being generated in the middle of this very wealthy region trickles down to those who are in the greatest of need.
Well, again, thank you very much for inviting us here. I'll also want to thank the candidates, also taking time all to join us here. And Councilmember Corrasso is correct. You know, during this campaign, I got to see her more often than I get to see my wife. I come back to May last night, and got up this morning, and things were still in place. Oh, six days ago. But I got the time of the day. I appreciate that the candidates, they all seems to know the top, the sub here very, very well. But I am the most experienced. I will serve a full time as the San Jose City Council for eight years, and I'll be finishing my sixth year as the state assembly. Before that, I was serving on the school board. So, I have a very, very gradual connection with, with the small businesses and also the neighborhood, the Romney. Again, thank you very much, you're welcome.
Well, that concludes our San Jose County Board of Supervisors candidate forum. On behalf of the number of companies who own the Silicon Valley Bishop Group and my working council colleagues, we want to thank them for joining us today. But even more importantly, for your willingness to put yourselves through the rigors of a campaign to serve our valley and our families and support me well. Colleagues, will you please join me in thanking all the candidates?